And show up on Monday, but I don't even know if the lobby will be open, so. Um, Tuesday at seven PM next door. Alright, um, we're gonna go ahead and get started.
Do we have enough for our GORM, is everybody else?
Oh yeah, who's? Okay, so I think you're the only one that's out, so that's good, we're fine. Perfect, thank you. Um, we are gonna, since we have our new planning commissioner, Christopher, um, we are going to do election of officers. Since, uh, Steve Pippen was elected chair and has since been elected city commissioner. So we're gonna do that at our meeting on Tuesday night. Um, and we're gonna go ahead and get started with our agenda, um, with our consent agendas.
Alrighty, item number one is BPC twenty-four oh eight dash zero zero six for a hillside protection site plan for Hillview Estates, um, eleven zero eight Chelsea Court.
Oh, sorry.
Alright, the purpose of this, um, application is they are wanting to extend their driveway to go around basically the entire house. This is their current layout right here of it. You go to the next slide, please. They're wanting to extend it all the way back here. That way there's a easier way to access the house and, um, not have to access the large front steps at the front door. Here's a more zoomed in with the landscape. So they're just wanting to extend the sidewalk, or sorry, not sidewalk, driveway to the rear also to allow parking, easier access into the house and not have to climb up the, the front door area. Um, the reason why it's before you guys is because it's in the, um, hillside protection. You guys have any comments, questions, concerns on this application?
No, my only question, it, it is hillside protection, but this, this is alright.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, anything, um, any improvements to the lot or the building and in the HP is required to come before the planning question. So even if it's just like a little portion, um, of HP on the lot, it will still come before you guys.
We're curious, does that include a fence? I've always wondered that.
I did, I don't know if the plan had a fence on it or not, but, um, if it did, no matter, typically we require a fence permit for the fence.
Right, so if it didn't, regardless of whether it's hillside, but i- is there any special designation for being hillside that there are any extra things that would be involved?
For a fence, no ma'am.
I didn't think so, okay, alright, we're good.
The new driveway looks remarkably close to the property line now, is that? It fits within the setbacks and everything?
The driveway.
It starts at the back of the, the existing driveway goes right there.
So it's already kind of within the setbacks anyway?
But is it, was it, is it like a grandfathered in exception, is that what is going on there?
Driveways can go to the property line.
To the property.
Unless there's a public utility drainage easement.
And, and then engineering has to improve the encroachment within the P U D E.
Okay.
But engineering's looked at this and they're okay with it.
I mean, you have to get into your property somehow, so it has to cross over.
Right, and, um, driveways are, um, a type B structure, so they're not required to be within the setbacks.
So just one point of clar- clarification for the, for those that are new, time's correct, it can be in the P U D. Driveways can be no closer than five feet to the property line though, new ones. And we have a lot around the city that are, they're already and, um, typically just let them go if they're there already. Unless in this case where they're doing no new work, but I, I think this one's probably five feet off of the property line, so it's okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a, I have a question, just since I live in an old neighborhood. So when people are redoing their houses, uh, and they redo their driveways, they should be five feet off the property line?
No less than five feet.
We should, we should have known that a few years ago, not from my own son. It's a little close, alright, thank you.
Alright, item number two is BPC twenty-five oh seven dash zero zero six for a revised final plat for Heathrow Hills subdivision, five Q one six Harpeth Bridge Drive. A little of the sending map action here. On the side, please. Alright, so the purpose of this request is to consolidate this existing lot with the house with parcel G right here. The owner of this existing residence also owns this parcel G. They just had never consolidated it before, so they're wanting to consolidate this lot into this lot. He owns both of them, now he owns one singular lot instead of two separate that are right next to each other. The N B S L back here is thirty-five because this is a separate subdivision, same with right here. But then it goes back to, I believe that's a twenty-foot setback, uh, setback because lot twenty-two is within the same subdivision as this lot twenty-one right here. That's why there's the difference in, um, N B S L. But again, he's just consolidating the two lots he already owns into one lot.
I know it makes life easier, but I wonder if there's a tax advantage to that for assessment?
Maybe.
Because he's adding more land that's not been approved by.
I think it's more of a, just a cleanup item. I think originally there was a dis- dispute on maybe ownership of that, of that piece. So he got it, he claimed it, he, he got it, so now he's incorporating it into his lot.
Cause it has no access, it's not like you could go and get anything, it's just kinda like open space or something.
Yeah, it's only point five acres, so.
Any comments, questions, concerns outside of what's already been? Item number three is another revised final plat for Forest of Brentwood subdivision, section two, lot fifty-five for seven oh six Forest Park Drive. The purpose of this request, if you have the next slide, please, Allison. Is they're want, wanting to, if you can. They're wanting to abandon or remove this drainage easement in the rear right here. What it's gonna do is just gonna allow them a little bit more space to add on to their house. They are removing this, uh, non-conforming detached structure right here, this garage. We have informed them that that garage will need to be removed prior to the signing of the final plat. Um, engineering's already looked at this, um, from at least from what I can remember, there's no issues from engineering on this standpoint. Again, just removing this to add a little bit more space to build on their lot.
Somebody's the beneficiary of the drainage easement. There's a declarant for easement.
So the, um.
Sign off and approval.
There is a, on the reported plat, it just showed the drainage easement, but they, the drainage easement on the plat is not what's actually out there on the property, it's, um.
Otherwise, the ditch is outside of the easement.
Yeah, the ditch.
They've, they've surveyed out the ditch line, C L one, L two, all four.
Right in this area.
Top of bank.
So they put it, in the recorded plat, it's shown right here, but the, it's actually up in this area. So what they're doing is they're, um, relocate, kind of relocating to where it actually is supposed to be. Or it is on the lot. Again, it's another little cleanup.
Of the plat, but on the lot, the actual water is moving through, not through the drainage ditch that's being moved. The actual water is already.
Yeah, the actual water is going up here.
Which we, we did, another point of clarification, we did have them add a stream buffer to the stream, so, uh, as is typically required. So they're, um, getting the advantage of removing the drainage easement, but then the disadvantage of having to add the stream buffers. Did I say that right, Kevin?
Yes, that's right.
Brian, did I answer your question or comment?
So does our legal, the city's legal department have worked with the applicant's lawyer? I mean, that's a, if you're actually amending an easement, that's a big.
They are, they are revising the, the location of the easement to, to reflect field conditions. So, so it's a cleanup item, basically.
Sure.
Uh, we can, I mean, the, the plat can't abandon the easement. Excuse me?
The applicant can't amend, unilaterally amend an easement without the declarance sign off. So I just assume that there's a lawyer involved?
Well, I, I think i- if I'm not conflating your concern, uh, the cle- um, the legal issue here is that the plat was prior recorded in the location that it is. That's the legal recordation of the prior easement. Where we re-recording the plat.
To reflect.
To reflect that, so I don't think there's any other legal documentations or sign offs that have to occur. And he's signing off, we're signing off on the plat, all the other entities and agencies are signing off the plat, the owner's signing off on the plat, so that would be the new legal recordation of the drainage easement.
So the easement's not getting amended?
There is no.
On camera.
There is no second, separate instrument for that easement of which I'm aware. The only instrument for that easement is shown on the existing plat, is the plat.
Who, I don't know my legal eas- who owns the easement? Why was it put there to begin with? Who is it that needed the water?
It's a public easement.
It's public, okay.
Yeah, it's a public easement, so the city would.
It lives in the plat.
Yeah, and so it gets a, we, we own the easement, they own the property, all parties are signing on this plat. We've, we've done this a lot in the past, a lot. If, if, if we're missing something, we've been missing it for a while, so I don't think we are, or not, yeah.
You can kind of see it. It's shaded in red, but you can kind of see the, um, drainage ditch right here. Like it's a concrete ditch. There's like a.
If it was a, if it was a, sometimes.
It's the city, no, you answered my question, it's the city, it's a public.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Sometimes there are sewer easements or other easements that are recorded by instrument. And so if this plat was being recorded, it would have to refer to that instrument as being abandoned. But in this case, the plat is actually the instrument that recorded the deal.
Which answers my question exactly.
And it's in the, the purpose of the plat, which is the removal of that easement and the addition of an easement.
Thank you.
Does the sixty-foot stream buffer mean that they can't build within that? I mean, I noticed it already touches the house, but.
It's, it's a sixty-foot average, so thirty-foot minimum, so they have to have at least thirty feet. But wherever they do have thirty, somewhere else on the lot, they have to make up for that difference so that.
They have to have ninety somewhere else, so that they, okay, got it.
Sort of like O S R D.
Alright, uh, next one is another, um, hillside protection in Heathrow Hills subdivision, uh, one zero zero seven Lookout Ridge. Um, this is one of the lots up on the hill in Heathrow Hills. Um, on Lookout Ridge, there's a shared, um, driveway that goes up around the corner from Heathrow Hills Drive to service all of these lots up here.
Like this.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's deep. It's one of the, I think this is the lot, is a buildable lot and still vacant, um, and then they're building on this one. So this request is the construction of a four thousand one hundred and forty-three square foot house. The property is one point three seven acres. Access from a shared private drive located off Heathrow Hills Boulevard. Um, the proposed residence will include born button siding painted black with light gray stone and cedar used as, um, accent materials, and then it will have a single roof and, um, standing seam metal. Um, so here's a closer up of, uh, site plan with the house on it. Um, here's some schematics of their proposal of what the house will look like once it's constructed. And then, uh, a condition that staff has is that we're, a mandatory pre-construction meeting will be required for the site prior to issuance of the permits, and there are sixteen standard conditions of approval. And this house will require a fire sprinkler system since it is like located within the hillside protection. Um, and then they're gonna be extending, um, water and sewer, from the cul-de-sac. So there's already a connection there of, um.
One thousand square foot?
Four thousand square foot.
Four thousand, I thought, I saw one thousand, I'm like.
It's got a basement, three levels.
Will you actually be able to see this?
You'll be able to see the top of it.
We've got some views, right? Resc- perspective views.
It, we forgot to put in the PowerPoint.
Oops.
I think it may be in your packet.
Yeah, okay.
On the iPad. But you can like, you can see that, um, it'll be no more than what you can see of the house is already up there.
Alright.
Any other questions?
Is that Lookout Ridge, is that a private drive?
Yes.
Yes.
It's gated, right?
Yes.
That's the access point for construction too?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it, it is gated? I didn't notice a gate when I went out.
It's gated or just private?
It's just private.
I think it's a private.
It used to have a chain years ago, and then now it doesn't have the chain anymore, so.
So I didn't drive up it, being a newbie, when I drove by yesterday, I was like, alright.
There's a bunch of mailbox at the bottom.
Yeah, should we drive up there if we want to, even though it's a private job? Okay.
Bring your badge and shout everybody up there.
Alright, um, okay, next one is another, um, this one's a revised hillside site plan located in the Hillview Estates subdivision one zero zero seven B, um, Highland Road. So it is the parcel that is outlined in red. Here is existing, um, they've got house, pool, and a little shed over here. Um, they are going to be, oops, um, remove, so they're adding, let's see, request, um, is to construct a five hundred thirty-one square foot garage, a five hundred ten square foot first floor addition, a new entryway, and a new porch. Um, there's an existing deck that they're going to be removing and replacing. And they're also, um, the request also includes the construction of an accessory structure which will, um, need to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the lot is, uh, six point eight four acres. Here's, um, some renderings of the house with their additions. Um, some more schematics of the house with their accessory structure back here in the rear. And then, um, this is what the proposed accessory structure will look like, um, and some views of, like, the house is not visible. It will not be visible and is not visible from, uh, lower elevations, it's pretty, pretty tucked in there.
Alright, item number six is BPC twenty-five oh eight dash zero zero three for a limited duration event for a food truck rally at Brentwood High School. Um, they've been having this food truck rally for the past few years. Um, it's gonna be in the same location as it has been right along Murray Lane within their parking lot area. There are hours, there are gonna be fourteen food trucks present. Uh, it's gonna take place on Friday, September nineteenth from eleven fifteen AM to one fifteen AM.
PM.
They are, sorry, PM, sorry.
Worst rally ever.
Um, they're gonna begin setting up the food trucks around ten fifteen AM and then leave around one thirty PM. But the actual event for people to actually buy the food is from eleven fifteen to one fifteen.
They do these twice a year?
They do.
Okay.
They do.
Cause when you guys say a year, I'm like, I don't feel, I feel like I see this more often, such twice a year.
Fall, spring and fall.
Okay.
Spring, they have the, uh, field day thing.
Yeah, and then this one's for their, um, homecoming.
And then you have the list of the fourteen food trucks, which sounds pretty good, honestly.
Yeah, so I might stop by.
Alright, um, next one is, um, wherever, a revised PW SF, which is a personal wireless, what's the S?
Service.
Service facility. Um, and it's located off, uh, or located on the property of fifteen ninety-eight Ragstale Road. And it is up here in the, um, way back on the property, and you've got Echo subdivision over here. And, um, Tuskany Hills on the back end of it.
Will this increase the service in Brentwood at all? Or is it just replacement of existing services?
They are going from, um, Sprint to Verizon. So if you have Verizon, then it may be a benefit. They're removing one Verizon mount with two antennas and, I mean, sorry, one Sprint mount with two antennas, and they're going to Verizon with twelve antennas and a bunch of other stuff that's listed in your staff report. Um, and then they are also, um, adding a generator, um, and then new equipment cabinets, and then there's also going to be an ice bridge connecting the tower to the.
What's an ice bridge?
Um, it, from my understanding, it is to protect the cables.
From ice.
It's all, it's, it's ground level within the, the fenced compound.
Okay.
Um, so it's nothing that's gonna be visible up on the tower or anything.
Is, what about the antennas, is that the same? The additional antennas, is there any change visually?
Um, so they're gonna, yeah, it's in the middle, so there's two existing, there's one up here, one antenna up here and one in, uh, mount down here. Um, so they're removing this middle, or they're replacing this middle one. Um, the height of the tower is not changing, the tower itself is not changing. Um, their lease space is not changing. Um, it is just replacement of antennas and then some ground equipment.
Verizon service in that area has been invisible inside of town, so.
And that should hopefully help that.
I wonder if this should actually be taken off of consent? Just so people would know that there's some improved, not that they wouldn't know, but I mean, you know, it gets buried in consent and there's pretty much an emphasis been stressed on improving our service in Brentwood. This takes three minutes to cover on the regular agenda and maybe gets a little more publicity.
Does the city commission also have anything to do with this?
Uh, we're working on other things, not this one in particular. We're working with the different companies trying to get some new and improved antennas.
This would just be another incidence of trying to improve service to.
Yeah, just a side note to that too. Yeah, actually, out in Nolan'sville, which this is kinda out that way, they're changing the water tower, the water tower has antennas on them. The new water tower, you can't put antennas on. So what we have out that way may even get worse before it gets better.
Thank you, Nolan'sville Utility District, right, yeah.
So, you know, again too, this just might be a little boost. Maybe it gets some, some coverage from the local newspaper if this was a regular item, just my thought.
And I think we can do both.
Who uses this tower? Is it T-Mobile, Spr- who is?
Sprint uses it now.
I don't know who the other, I can find out who the other characters are.
Cause Sprint is no longer exists, it's now T-Mobile, so the question is, is T-Mobile clients gonna be, people that use T-Mobile gonna be affected by the transition?
Probably.
Well, I, so I don't know, there's two.
They kinda share, don't they? I mean, I don't think, just cause I'm on Verizon means I can't, I don't use a T-Mobile tower. And so I think Verizon giving a better tower gives kinda everybody a boost in that area.
And T-Mobile very well could be one of these other mounts, I don't know who these other mounts are, but I can find out for you.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
And they're not looking at just cutting anybody's service off in this transition, it's just an automatic type of switch, right? From what you know?
Correct.
So you wanna put it on the agenda then?
I, I would like it, just so it'd be a little more publicity.
You, you need the PR, is that what it is? You need the publicity right now, okay.
I'm fine with moving it, I think maybe having some discussion, you can call it publicity, but just some education about what this looks like and what's happening, and that twelve new antennas doesn't mean twelve new towers sticking way up, all that's helpful.
If the applicant frames it as a positive, and then the, you know, and we kind of maybe reach out to the press and say, hey, by the way, look at this good thing Brentwood's doing for its citizens.
Yeah.
Is increasing our self-service in areas that it's not great.
Right, and we will continue to do that, which leads into the next thing.
Yeah, but I don't know, we don't know who the other two providers on the.
You know, if somebody's getting their, including self-service in Brentwood, and that's the story.
Yeah.
And this is one of the ways that can occur that really doesn't involve.
Yeah, but it's not a negative.
And it's not a new tower, I mean, it's an existing tower.
Right.
Um, and there's no change to the tower itself, so.
I think all that is good information for people that are paying attention to understand how this can happen.
Okay, well, I will, um, find out who the other two existing providers are. Um, and then we will move this to the regular agenda. Alright, moving on. Okay, um, our next, um, item is a minor site plan alteration for two hundred Powell Place. Um, located here in the Maryland Farms area right here, so you've got, um, Maryland Way, let me zoom in. Um, and you've got Virginia Way back here and Powell Place right there. Alright, so, um, ASD Sky requests approval of minor site revisions at the building entrance. So they're gonna be, um, reconstructing their courtyard for this, um, development. And they're gonna be doing, uh, some improvements such as, uh, an outdoor kitchen, an outdoor, with an outdoor grill, an outdoor fireplace, and a bunch of new landscaping. And then, um, they are also going to be, uh, painting the building. So here's what the building looks like right now, um, it's currently under construction, I think they're doing tenant finish stuff. Um, this used to be where American Addictions, um, was at one point in time, and then I think it became a, a multi-tenant, uh, and now I don't think anyone's in there. So this is kinda, this is their proposal, so it's gonna be painted a, um, dark gray with some dark green accents, most of the dark green's gonna be within the courtyard and then some accents on the outside. And then they're also proposing, um, a, an outside staircase to provide. a, an outside staircase to provide, um, access outside to the second level. They're also going to be doing, proposing this rebar, um, structure that's going to house an elevator. Let's see if, and I've got some rendering, so this is kinda what the their courtyard will look like. And it's gonna have a, a mezzanine, um, with like a little pavilion. So again, they're adding a lot more trees. So they're going above and beyond what our landscaping ordinance requires. Here is kind of down below what rebar structures, um, look like. And then over here is kind of what the, um, out exterior stairs and mezzanine kind of will, uh, look like.
I, I wondered what the rebar structure was when it was in there. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That's a good visual.
Are they gonna put some kind of like so that it won't?
Rust?
Rust, yeah.
I'm kinda tall.
I'm getting old. Yeah, be, because rusty rebar is not the look we're looking for.
That's a good question. They may want the rust look.
Yeah, I think it's already going to look quote unquote, look rust, like.
So that's why the rendering is orangeish because they're planning on rebar patina, look at it that way.
I think it's a good improvement for the building.
I do too, and I think we're gonna see a lot more of this modernizing and updating from just brick to something a little bit more interesting.
Seventies and eighties buildings.
I think it'll draw more people to the, the office park to be able to have a modernized look. So I think this is good.
Something this detailed is probably being done with the re-tenanting of the building, re-tenanting request. Is there any, is there any building signage going up?
Um, not that we're aware of. We have not been, uh, we've not received a, a proposal. There is a, a couple of years ago, we did a monument sign for them. So if they choose to do signage, they can do it on the monument sign. I don't know if they'll, you know, if it, if it's new owners, I don't know if they'll allow for signage on the building. It's up to the new tenant owners or building owner. But a lot of, I mean, Maryland Farms is kind of empty since COVID and a, a lot of these property owners are trying to get new tenants in. And the only way for them to do that is, um, by updating a lot of these older
Well, it's just like service merchandise and getting the mural and all that.
Yeah.
Very, just trying to bring people in.
Yep. Trying to bring people back into this area.
And obviously for the city of Brentwood, that's really important, so.
Yeah, I mean, this, the building behind us has been vacant since COVID. I mean, no one's in there. All right. Next one.
All right. Item number nine is BPC twenty-five oh eight dash zero zero seven for a minor site plan alteration for the Pear Tree Village Shopping Center, where it's Kroger, Petco, First Watch, um, right here off of Franklin Road. The requesting approval to repaint the Village Shopping Center, the current coloring on the shops are a mix of tans, browns with white accents along the roof line and metal accents at each front entrance. Kind of, you can kinda see it like right here. And there's some other designs they have as well. The modifications will encompass the entire shopping area, so not just the two, couple stores that I listed. But they do include Kroger and Petco. The, they would modify the current coloring to, um, the white roof line to an alabaster color. The metal front door accents to a black coloring. And the tan brick areas to a grizzle gray with a light brown striping along the front to an urban bronze. This will modernize the existing shopping center. I do wanna note, lastly, that the work has already been completed on these stores.
I think they oughta have to redo the Little Clinic. I, I, I don't like it. I think it's way too much. I think they stepped out of bounds. And I think they tried to cover that up here. They can put the sign, but I don't think they oughta have the blue.
That blue is egregious to me, but, you know, I don't know.
I, I don't mind approving them for the upgrades, but I think they have to take away the blue.
Is that something that's in our
Purview, right.
Purview to say, hey, you can you don't like the blue?
You approve the colors, I mean.
It's up to them.
I think you have to determine that, um, maybe it's not consistent with the surrounding area.
It's not.
So that would probably be the basis for that, but obviously you'll have to move it from consent to regular. Can you guys talk to the applicant and see what their thoughts are?
About removing the blue? I mean, I think we can make a note, I mean, comment to them.
Sure, we can reach out to them. The whole building's already painted.
What would you see as an alternative?
To me, this, this Little Clinic sign, you see how the, you got Kroger with the beige behind it. You could continue that over there, it's just it's a huge amount of blue.
The Little Clinic sign itself did not change. It is still the same square footage, but it looks, I think it kinda looks bigger to people because they did add the
The blue.
Here's the question, was the blue brick before? So you can't unpaint brick? I'm, I'm pretty sure it was brick.
You can make it a slate.
Then you'd have a solid gray.
Yeah, they could make it gray like the entrance is.
Yeah, why wouldn't they make it?
And set it apart. I mean, if they wanna set it apart and accent it, they can accent it the same as the front there.
Right, yeah. Now we're playing designer, which isn't our job. Yeah, I think we talk to them and see what their thoughts are.
I saw that the first thing, it's like, whoa, that's a lot of
And it's also, it's not our fault that they already did it, so it's a lot easier to do this if they wouldn't have already done it, but that's, that's a them problem. We can reach out to them and suggest that they come out, uh, come up with maybe an alternative design to show at the meeting. And then in that, we'll say, um, well, if they don't, then we'll move it to regular. Well, I would Or guess we just move it to regular anyways. I would suggest we go ahead and move it. We'll move it to regular and then we'll decide.
I think we can tell them, we're not opposed to, to this right here. It's the Little Clinic part that they overstepped on and needed to correct for us to move forward. I think everybody generally agrees that this isn't bad here.
So if they were to agree to change it, uh, at that meeting, we can't say, good, it passes.
You have to resubmit, I imagine. Or do so in advance of Monday? I, I think if, I think if the applicant brought, brought another option for the Little Clinic portion, you know, or, or said that, hey, we'll paint the blue, the gray.
Right, right.
Then I think it's fine for you guys to
I do too.
Agree with that. And just say, you know, this with the Little Clinic option being in gray, then we can vote on it that way.
Condition of approval?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and that way they know ahead of time.
Now, what's the rationale for wanting to make the change? Cause we've had discussions about the painting of buildings that are going on in the city of Brentwood. So what is our rationale now for this?
Because we don't like it.
Not consistent with the same.
It's not consistent with what's in the area?
It's not consistent with
It's not consistent with the building.
Cause there's not any other place on the building that's gonna be redone, really, like that blue, blue, blue.
So we all, is that legit?
It's before.
We've had discussions on paint before and we've already been told, you gotta, we, we're not gonna get into that business establishing the paint standards throughout the city.
We can't establish paint standards, but we can't establish that if you're coming up with a building
Which is why it's for us to begin with, cause we do have the jurisdiction to opine.
Remember the paint building?
And that being the point, opine. I mean, it, like, Ryan said, it's, it's, we have the ability to opine, but we need to listen to feedback back and forth.
Okay.
But we can say anything we want, really. You know, if we say, it looks better green, whatever, but we wouldn't do that.
Have opinions.
Right, right. But the opinions need to be based upon reasonable, which would be consistency. It's a little bit bold for
This is what, this is twenty twenty-one, is what the Little Clinic does like.
Yeah, and see that? And if you put that in there, I just turn it, yeah, this is what it looked like before.
It's kinda sitting.
Which
They did a blue for a reason. They're gonna say, I want it to pop. They presume they're gonna say, I wanna change it.
And then we can debate whether we just, we think it should pop on a completely different Yeah. Cause everything around it doesn't pop. Shows what's in there, should be ample.
Yeah.
We will reach out to the applicant.
We're gonna move it to regular?
Yes.
That's the new owner of that shopping center, right?
Yes, yeah, um, of that shopping center and Brentwood.
No, uh, same owner.
Same owner, right.
Same owner here. Brentwood Place sold. Okay.
It's the same owner as Brentwood.
This group owns Brentwood Place.
Yes.
Also.
Yeah. Regency? Yeah, and they're the applicant.
All right, moving on?
All right.
The number ten, which is now eight?
Okay, so we've got another minor site plan alteration for Auto Pro, located at sixteen ten Franklin Road, um, down near Moore's Lane. All right, let me get my space back. Our packets are big this month. All right, so Auto Pro requests approval for a minor site plan alteration of an existing outbuilding, um, located at sixteen ten Franklin Road. The remodel will include a metals, uh, new metal siding, a new roof, um, new garage doors. Um, they exist, uh, so they're gonna be having eight garage doors, whereas the existing building has twenty-two garage doors that will be removed and replaced. And the building will consist of a tan metal siding with a gray metal roof. So here's pictures of, um, the current building. It's kind of in states of disrepair. And then this is, um, what it will
Has to be better.
Look like once it's done. So again, it's gonna be a tan, tan metal building with a metal, um, roof.
It's on the hill up behind the dealership.
Yeah, it's, it's
It's kinda hard to see, it's back in the woods.
Back in there.
They've added a bunch of gravel, so you might wanna put it in all-wheel drive. You're busting around back there.
I'm just curious, if this thing fell tomorrow, could they rebuild it? Or, or are they re-cladding it because it's, otherwise wouldn't be able to control the zoning? They, they can rebuild it if it is totally removed, they, it would still meet setbacks and everything.
Yeah, it's a lar, it's kinda deceiving, but it's a large
Yeah.
lot. I mean, it is tucked, you can't really see it from the road. And we have requested kind of it to blend in, so that's why they've selected the, um, this tan color. And then it's gonna have a lighter, um, roof color to help with the sun reflection and the fact that they're gonna be storing cars in here, they don't want them, um, overheating. All right. Now, moving on to our regular agenda. We've got a revised preliminary plan for the Tiburon subdivision, um, which is formerly known as the AeroCo subdivision. Couple, I think last year, uh, we did it, was it last year?
January of twenty-four.
Did an annexation, um, of this portion in the red outline. Um, and then we're, they're, so the property that they're adding is already, was already annexed into Brentwood. And so they're just combining it. So they're going from, so there, uh, a total of twenty-eight lots and approximately forty-three acres. The revision adds fifteen acres and eight additional lots. The, uh, let's see, all proposed lots comply with the requirements of the R two zoning, so they're, um, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. Here's the, um, revised preliminary plan, so, can you see the, these are, oh, I have one over here, sorry. So this is the original AeroCo, and then this whole section will be Tiburon, so they're adding this portion over here. There's three lots that front, uh, Sam Donald Road. These will be two acres in size. And then, um, the rest of the lots will access the existing, or they'll connect to the existing road. These three lots will have their own driveway mailboxes, whereas the rest of them will have, use the, uh, shared cluster box unit for the subdivision.
Is eleven feet the minimum width for a road in Brentwood? Curious, or a lane, whatever.
Right, for a local road.
Right, right, yeah, I thought so. Cause I noticed that the collector's twenty
Lanes on both Ragsdale and Split Log, the improved sections as well, just for a bit of, uh, traffic calming, tighter roads, lower speed, open.
I have a question, just made in size, will this be agenda item one? And then the tower will be two, and then the, um, shopping center will be three? Does that just kinda have a flow? We can do whatever order you prefer. Whatever you guys want.
Usually go by numbers, so.
So no? All in order? Have to read them to everybody?
All right, that is everything.
Where's the new driveway that, for those three houses?
So two of them will, uh, have, uh, one of them will use the existing drive right here. And then these two lots right here will have a shared driveway.
It's just one cut.
So just one new cut on Sam Donald.
If I'm on Sam, I'm talking to this guy back here, he's representing him, right? Jeff?
Yes.
If you're on Sam Donald, how would I get to these two houses back on the, this side? Come down that shared driveway?
You mean twenty and, uh, twenty-one and twenty-two?
Right.
Yeah, she'd come down the shared driveway and it would, it would fork off.
Okay.
Anything else on this item? That's everything for this agenda. Again, the planning commission meeting will be on Tuesday, not Monday, at seven PM. That's all we got.